Good morning. Marshall County Board of Supervisors, a meeting in regular session on this eighteenth day of October 2016 at 9:00 a.m. with all three members present in the northeast corner, third floor of the Marshall County Courthouse. I'd invite you now to please rise and with me, let's say that pledge for allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just kind of a notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks or that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chair person to read the item from the agenda. The Board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor, and opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and a rule called rule will follow. First item is the approval or the amendment to the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that. And a motion, second. Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Moving on to the consent agenda, item number two, the approved minutes from regular session of October 4, 2016. Number three is the except recorder's quarterly report from 9/16. In that report is records management fund of $1,596, the e-commerce fund of $1,596, and general basic fund of $56,223.15. Item four, file clerk of district court report, 9/16. This is a general supplemental fund 10% surcharge for a total of $891.70. Item five, approved transfer of funds, transfer number 879, a quarterly transfer of $842,500 from rural services fund to secondary road fund. And item six, approval of the claims, as audited and authorized the county auditor and recorded to issue payment same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with all claims paid for the month of October. The October list of claims will be part of the first meeting in November. I would entertain a motion on our consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second and a discussion. Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. All right, moving on, I'm gonna, we're gonna make a change in the agenda just a little bit, we're gonna move item number 10 up to this time. This is a request from a, from a, what do you, how do you pronounce it? Geo?
Geocaching.
Geocaching, on the courthouse grounds. This is a request from a class of Miller Middle School students to place a geocaching near the courthouse as one of their school projects. This will be placed in or around Marshalltown to show best places to visit. And we're gonna turn it over to the ladies from Miller Middle School. This is, this is big for us.
You can put it on the table, there's people can see it.
Andrew Potter's back, I mean, it's like hometown.
This is like a family reunion.
So ladies, what are we doing?
So my name is Emily Maynes, this is Carly Castillo and Stephanie Zavalza, and we are doing a project on placing geocaches in the best places to visit in Marshalltown, and we feel that the courthouse is one of those.
What is geocaching?
Yeah, that's what we like to know.
Geocaching is a small container hidden in a location that is recorded on a, on a geocaching app. People look for the container using GPS coordinates, when found, participate, participants send a log sheet and return it to where it was found. Did you know that there are over 25 geocaches hidden around Marshalltown?
For this project, we are going to place geocaches in the best places in Marshalltown. Some of the benefits are tourism, getting to know our town better, getting people out and exercising, promoting pride in Marshalltown, better connecting with Marshalltown, and getting connected with nature. Some of the possible locations we'd like to put them around the courthouse are on the board, there's some pictures, we, we found some trees with holes in them that we could stick in there, and there's a few cracks in the front of the building that they would fit, or behind one of the spotlights in the front, and we'd like to add that this would not disrupt your business, but it might draw people in that are interested to help out our community.
Now, how do people, if you have been a non-technical person like we are, what do you do, how, what does a person use to track these or to find these?
Well, there's an app that you can get on your phone, and it has, like, if you put the geocache somewhere, then you log the coordinates on there so that other people can go around and they have the coordinates and they can find them.
And when they find it, then what do they do? They just?
They sign a log, and sometimes there's a little prize in there, like a little eraser or something, and then they can take that, and they might wanna replace it with something else, but they, they sign the log and then move on.
So you've already got a place designated where you would like to put one here?
Yeah.
And it's not digging up the ground or anything?
No.
Okay. Now, the log goes there also?
Yeah.
I mean, you've got a little hook.
There's, you can get, from the geocaching company, you can get little, like, rolls of paper that you can roll up and put in the container.
I see. Interesting.
Well, they won't be digging any holes in there, so we don't have to worry about our fiber optic.
No. No, I, I, to me, how long is this project, how long will this continue?
Um, it varies. It can be a really long time, or if it doesn't turn out successful, if we don't see many people coming, we can take it out.
How many other places in town have, have agreed to do this?
Um, well, places that we've already asked are Taylor's Majerite, Grimes Farm, and the Orpheum.
And you got more places in mind?
Yeah.
Do you move them around, is it the same one you move around, or do you have multiples?
There's multiples.
Okay.
Well, I would entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I will, motion that we approve this request from the class of the Miller Middle School for their school project to place a geocache on the courthouse grounds.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that. All right, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Sounds fun.
It does. An app, I got you. Uh, rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. He's very good job.
Do you need a smartphone for the app?
Yes.
Are the apps free?
We're in trouble now.
Hey, the apps are free.
Apps are free. Adam, sign us up for some of those.
We got real ones now, Ted.
Yeah, I got, I got, thank you, guys. Very, thank you very much. Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Back to school. Thank you.
Andrew, good to see you again.
Andrew, good to see you in middle school finally.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming up here.
Finally coming into something, I mean. All right, moving on, item number seven, we'll go back to seven, this is approved of the personnel action. This is a change rate of pay for Tammy Woosley, full-time sheriff's office, full-time administrative assistant, change of rate of pay from $46,789.20 a year to $47,467 per year to main, to maintain exempt status effective November 1, 2016.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. I guess, I guess my main question is, what is exempt?
Okay, just so you're aware of it, both the executive secretary, which was Mindy before, and now is Colleen, and then the administrative assistant, which is actually the office manager for the Marshall County Sheriff's Office in charge of the civil division, handling all the civil processing, and all the records are all underneath her. Both those individuals have been in exempt status, really since I've been sheriff, since we've had them. What's happened is the federal law changed the amount of money that would be paid to individuals, minimum, as far as a minimum amount of money to, to maintain the exempt status. Now, there's other things that also qualify them for that.
Is exempt status just to not have to pay overtime?
Yeah, it's what it is, it's, it's just basically, but they also, there's other considerations. The fact is that she manages personnel, she recommends hiring, firing of personnel, she sets their hours of work, she does all these different things. Tammy is actually the number four person on our agency, underneath the chief jailer, which is Joel Phillips. So when you put that into consideration, she can endet the county, she can approve, you know, purchases and, and things like that for the sheriff's office. So she's really a department head for the county, is what she actually is underneath me, just like the chief jailer is.
So she's actually moved up a position?
She's actually been there forever, that's been the same exact spot.
So why are we, why are we doing it now?
Because that law just changed. The, the law just changed, and we were told by the auditor's office that we had to adjust the wages for it, or move her to an hourly rate. The problem with it is, hourly rate is, you know, $700 is not a lot, I think this is probably economically the more feasible thing, and frankly, it meets her status because of the personnel that she manages.
And she's non-unioned.
She's non-unioned, yep, yep.
No, so we don't have to do anything with the, with our contracts?
Um, just a side note, we did take the executive secretary, and we did move her to an hourly rate, because of the gap there was about $7,000, and we just couldn't really justify increasing that. There's the status and all the baseline of what her duties are, fit in exempt status, just is that the pay difference was too great to go ahead and justify that move. This one's considerably less than $700.
Very good, thank you.
This, this new rule will take effect December 1, 2016, and I see we've got an effective date of the change to November 1, 2016.
It's just basically moving, not moving forward with it now, so we can get it taken care of.
And that will be no problem with payroll?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
You bet, gentlemen, thank you very much.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would move to approve personnel action here to change rate of pay for Tammy Woosley, full-time sheriff's office, full-time administrative assistant, change rate of pay from $26,789.20 per year to $47,467 per year to maintain exempt status effective November 1, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
All right, then motion and a second, any further discussion?
One thing to keep in mind, this is gonna change every few years, they're gonna put out new numbers, so we might be having to come back to this at some point, we don't know what that number is, so it makes sense for him to.
It jumped about 10 grand just this last night.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the crazy thing about it, so.
Looking forward, do you see where we're gonna have any other instances of this that we're gonna have to change in other departments?
I have sent it out to the attorney's office and to the assessor's office as well, so they are aware of the changes. It's, it's about four, four or five people that were within Marshall County.
Real quickly, the reason we moved that one when we did is because we brought in a new hire for the executive secretary, so it just seemed like it was a good time to move and get this accomplished, rather than be halfway, we're just gonna do both of them as sure as it comes down.
So there's about four more people throughout our organization you say that this may apply to, this, this law?
I believe one in the assessors and one in the attorneys, I think you had possibly two out there at the, yeah, at the sheriff's.
All right, rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Moving on, item number eight, youth and shelter services of Marshall County, David Hicks, the director of youth and shelter services, with us today will present a first quarter report.
Boy, this came around fast.
It did, yeah, we just blew past it, you just, you know, time flies when you're having fun, I guess, but, yeah, this reflects our data we've collected, we get county funds to support our sliding fee scale and to work with families who don't have an ability to pay our full rate or don't have insurance, it kind of is a great catch-all for those families, so, also supports our 24-hour crisis and support line, so as you can see, we had 32 crisis calls typically after hours from July to through September, 12 met the criteria to bill for the county, which should be for those who are 18 and under who are calling, or the focus of the case would be for that person under 18. We've had at least a couple interesting things happen that I want to bring your attention to. Last couple times I've been on call, I received a call from a mom with a 14-year-old son who's experiencing some severe mental health and behavioral issues. That 14-year-old hearing voices, definitely becoming a debilitating circumstance with, with the mental health. They are a Title 19 case, their managed care company would not pay to have him put in a shelter to be hospitalized for that concern, so, she was calling around all, all over to the state to find someplace that can, that managed care company can pay for brief shelter stay, brief hospital stay based on those circumstances, and that, that MCO didn't wanna pay, or for whatever reason, there's a barrier, so, took a call late at night, just trying to figure out what we can do for this kid, the best I could do is provide supports to mom, saying, get in to see the mental health provider the next day, and make sure he's safe, all, all those things, as parents, we wanna make sure our children is safe, but, you know, having some of those severe mental health issues at 14 is very difficult, especially when there's a financial barrier that for some reason their MCO was not willing to pay for shelter. Another call I got, last time I was on call, was a mom with a son who's turning 18 soon, also, that son is having severe mental health issues, becoming a danger in the home, there's really no other place for that young man to go, and she's recommending and wanting him to go into our transitional living program, so, we're kinda seeing the fallout of not enough services for mental health, people are experiencing mental health, not enough beds, and our transitional living program is not meant for those with severe mental illness, transitional living, runaway homeless, of course, some of those may be experiencing mental health issues, but to have somebody saying, I, I can't have this kid in my home, I want them in your transitional living program, because their mental health is so severe, our family is in danger, so, we're starting to see some of that, that, that carryover.
David, but is that the responsibility? I mean, the, the child belongs to the parents, not to the youth and shelter services.
Yeah, and the kid's turning 18, and I think they're just kinda fed up with the behaviors, so they're looking for some, someplace for this kid to go, and our beds, you know, we don't have the capacity to fill those needs of somebody with severe mental health, that's just not our purpose, and we don't have the staff qualified, so, and that was a hard conversation to have, because mom is looking for other options, and quite frankly, there's just not many other options. So some of those calls that we're getting are exceeding what services we can provide, those severe mental health concerns, we just don't provide that, we provide some therapy, we can do play therapy as well, but housing those mentally ill, you know, we just, we just can't do that, it's too, too difficult, and our services aren't set up to handle that population.
We run into a similar situation in juvenile detention up in Eldora, where we have a couple of individuals that are under 18 that constantly revolve through our system that have severe mental health problems, DHS will not place them in an institution, the state will not help, so they wind up being incarcerated until they're 18 and then turned loose, and then, and then your head winds up.
Yes, and, and the jail system is, is the new mental health center.
I can think of six people just sitting here right now who would have gone through all that failure.
Yep.
And are now in jail.
Yeah.
Right now, we have, currently.
Yeah, and, you know, the jail is not equipped to deal with those who, who are experiencing mental health, neither are we, so we've got a, we've identified a gap, a barrier.
Yeah, this is exactly what we're talking about, where they get on, in this treadmill, and they run through every single organization, and it's a mental health issue, and we cannot get the state to have adequate placement for these people.
And it's a problem country, right?
Yeah, yes.
All the big corporations have put so much lip service to it, but they're not doing any.
No money.
Yeah, no money.
Bed, bed-wise, it's kind of a misnomer, in the state of Iowa, bed-wise, there's only three or four less beds than there were a period of years ago, and the, the popular thing to do now is to say, well, the county supervisors have to do something about this mental health issue. When somebody gets committed to mental health, the judge has a placement, and they then call the sheriff to take that person from point A to point B. The county supervisors have nothing to do with placing
Correct.
that person in, in a particular bed and institution in, within the state.
Yeah, and it takes law enforcement off-duty if you're transporting somebody halfway across the state.
We're lucky here because the board worked out and negotiated for transport of mental health individuals or rehabilitated that way, but, but the real problem is, is that these people who aren't getting adequate treatment end up failure, they, they act out, they, they harm somebody, they, they act out because maybe a substance abuse issue pops up, next thing you know, they're perpetrating crime and they end up in jail, and that's, and that becomes very expensive for us, and it's a problem that's growing nationwide, and I don't understand, everybody's passing the buck, now, everybody's passing it down to locals to handle it, they're saying, you're a problem, we're a transient society today, we have doctors, people in our county that just aren't really our county people, but we have to.
Yeah, and there are, some agencies like Central Iowa Recovery, they do a great day treatment program, Center Associates certainly handles mental health, so we're not saying that there's nothing available, but you just have certain hard-to-manage people that end up either in law enforcement or with an agency like us that we can't do anything about it, so it's, it's certainly a challenge, but those are things we're, we're kinda seeing that's a little bit newer for us. I'm, I'm on call again this week, so I anticipate probably another call regarding a mental health issue that we may not be able to handle, so, I'll pass these along. Another thing that YSS has been involved with, with many years is human trafficking, which has really become, I think, a lot more aware than what it used to be, so, a lot of our assessments, a lot of our intakes for transitional living, if we have a kid who comes in, we're gonna ask him some leading questions that will hopefully expose if they are being trafficked or not, and you can see some data on the inside of the brochure, Chuck, I'll give this to you guys. But human trafficking is becoming a major issue, you know, a lot of homeless runaway young people become victims to human trafficking right here in Marshalltown, it's happened, will continue to happen, I think law enforcement is also becoming very, very aware of human trafficking and the issues that, that, that comes along, so a lot of human trafficking victims start off young, ages 12, 13, 14, they're promised money, three hots and a cot, opportunity, and then they become trapped, so, some of the leading questions we ask when we have a young person coming in, coming into our program is, do you have access to your own money? Do you control how it's spent? Do you have access to leave where you're staying? Does somebody know that you're here? Are you in danger of being here? So there's a lot of control, a lot of young people are afraid to flee their situation they're in, but we've served several people in our transitional living program who have been victims of human trafficking, usually prostitution, but we also see some who are wanting to flee that, that situation, which makes it very dangerous. Again, it's a controlling circumstance that makes it very dangerous to leave, so, this has certainly been in our radar for a long time, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that we are indeed part of a larger human trafficking network, we've got services on the back, we provide here in Marshalltown, Des Moines, and all of our locations, but we're part of a larger human trafficking network across the state, so we're just part of a, a piece of a much larger puzzle, but I, I'm glad the board can be aware of that this morning, if you haven't been already. Sure.
With the change at the House, House of Compassion, when they reopen, not taking single adult males anymore and having more room for families, is that going to be an assist for you?
It might be, we'll have to see kinda how it rolls out, and I understand they wanna serve the most troubling population, young women with children, I think that's, that's a huge population that needs to be addressed, we also serve that population, so, we actually see it as a benefit, if the House of Compassion serves a young mom and kids for a few nights, they can transfer into our Lighthouse or New Hope program if they're up to age 26, and they can sustain, you know, in our transitional living program. We, we get referrals for singles for transitional living, but we'll see if that increases since the House of Compassion will no longer be taking those single males, so we'll, we'll kinda see what, what happens, but I see it as, as a win-win for both of us, serving a very dangerous population as far as being abuse victims, single women and their children and families, families could include men as well, so I guess we'll wait to see, but I, I appreciate the way they're going forward, and I know they have concerns over the years based on what we've just talked about, having the mentally ill coming into that, that shelter, and the dangers that can provide, somebody who's unmedicated with some mental health, mental health issues, and that place is served by volunteers who have virtually no experience in working with that population, that, that's a dangerous scenario, so, I'm glad they addressed it, and it's something that needed to be done.
David, going back to the availability of beds, is part of that availability of psychiatrists?
It is, there, there's such a need for psychiatrists that our main office in Ames that deals a lot more with mental health, we do telehealth, so we contract with psychiatrists across the country that we could do telemedicine, teletherapy.
How's that work?
I guess it's worked out okay.
Really?
It's not ideal, but we identify a gap where we can't get psychiatrists to come, so this is the next best, best thing is doing telehealth, we have a, a nurse on our, on our staff who is there with that young person, but then the doc is over in Denver, Colorado, and, and we do it over the internet with video conferencing.
You're gonna continue to see more of that, I know, through Center Associates, we do a certain amount of that, one of the largest problems we have with mental health is exactly what you just said, is getting the practitioners here, you know, we'd love to turn the second half of the hospital into some sort of mental health treatment center, the problem is, you have to have a minimum of two psychiatrists on staff so that you don't burn one of them out
Sure.
being constantly on call.
Sure.
We used to have two here, and then it went down to one, and then, then they closed those beds, but I mean, we used to have these facilities right here in Marshalltown, and they're, they're gone because we can't recruit the individuals to come in and staff them.
Yeah, yeah, I know Ames has, you know, over at their facility, a mental health component, but I know they may be struggling as well, so we'll kinda see where that, that leads as well, and that's a concern for us, you know, since a lot of our, our main office is located in Ames, and we partner with them, just like we do here.
We always enjoy having you come and speak to us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is great.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it, appreciate the board's support.
Exactly, right, thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Have an entertaining motion on this quarterly report.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the Youth and Shelter Services first quarterly report.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Moving on to item number nine, thank you, David. Moving on to item number nine, buildings and grounds department discussion, possible action for the renewal agreement with Halverson Train for service and maintenance, and Lucas, we'll get you to center stage.
All this is, is just an update to our contract that we sign every year with Halverson Train to take care of our chiller and air handler, two air handlers at the sheriff's office, and there's a small increase on it, I think there hasn't been an increase for three or four years, but I wanna say it's only like $300, and it's just
Yeah, that's annually.
the cost of doing business, yeah.
Yeah, I, I pulled last, like, last contract.
Yeah, I, I, it, it's gone up since last year, but I think it'd been three or four years prior to that since it's went up, so, and, like I said, it's small, I wanna say it's right around $300.
And you have no issues with them continuing?
I have no issues, I think they do a wonderful job, they send, they send the same tech for the last four years now, he's very familiar with our system, and does a great job.
I know, the past, they've always got right out there when you call them.
Yeah, yeah, if I call them, they're there same day or right away the next day, so, they're a great company to work with and happy with them.
How far does that tech have to come?
Uh, I wanna say he's out of like Mason City, but Halverson, he has his own truck, and I think he does a lot of the, I think we're kinda the bottom of his area, I think he does a lot of northeast, and I think we're, or actually northwest, and we're towards the end of where he actually goes, but, it's the same guy every year, and, I like him.
Kinda knows what you're getting into when he gets here.
Yeah, and that's helpful, and he did our, we did an expansion valve upgrade earlier in the year, he did it, and, so, it's a good job.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the renewal agreement with Halverson Train for service and maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Moving on to item number 11, planning and zoning department receipt of quotes from Marshall County Weed Control Spray Program for calendar year 2017, and set date and time to renew contract. I believe we received it yesterday, it has not been opened yet, I think we received it after, after, or right at the time, limit time, so.
I'll have to run and get them, I didn't get them.
Well, what we need to do is just set it, let's just set a time.
Well, we're probably going to open them on the 15th.
No, we're gonna, we're probably gonna award it on the 15th, I bet we, I bet we, I bet we, the first meeting in November, that would be the, what's the date on that one?
Should be the first.
Yes, it'd be the first, let's, let's open them on the first.
Where's planning and zoning?
He's out in a septic tank.
There was an issue?
He's out in a septic tank.
Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the receipt of quotes for Marshall County Weed Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the receipt of quotes for Marshall County Weed Control Spray Program for 2017 and set the date to award the contract on November 15th, 2016 at 9:00 AM at the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting, Marshall County Courthouse, third floor, northeast corner, meeting room number two.
I do believe we need to open them though, because we need to receive what we're having, correct?
Well, we're just accepting the receipt.
Okay.
And then we can open them on the first and award on the 15th.
Just wanted to make sure that we're...
Yeah. Okay, we got a motion, need a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Right, moving on. Item 12, uh, request use of the courthouse grounds. Uh, the Marshall Town YWCA respectfully requests the use of the courthouse grounds for an event, uh, for the YWCA Week Without Violence, uh, October 18th through the 24th. And, uh, we've already, I've already talked with Lucas, and we've got a banner, and they will be up later today. And we will continue doing this. We've, we've done this, I think, for probably the last four years anyway. And, uh, so I'd entertain a, um, a vote on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve this request for the Marshall Town YWCA for the use of courthouse grounds on Tuesday, October 18th, 2016, after 10:00 AM to re, to place approximately 1,836 small 18-inch tall flags on the courthouse lawn representing the victims of domestic violence in Marshalltown, as well as those corollary affected.
We got a motion, need a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Again, this is just a continuation we've done in the past, and, uh, they will be in contact with our buildings and ground, Lucas and Bo, and, um, everything should go smoothly. And I, rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on, moving on. Item number 13, Resolution 2016 dash 0039, a resolution, zone resolution, preliminary and final plots of the Husak subdivision. Um, Doug, you are here. Welcome, welcome with us this morning.
Thank you.
And, uh, give us a little...
Yes, Doug Husak, 102 Duesenberg Drive in Conrad. And, uh, so I'm here today asking for the, uh, Board of Supervisors to approve a final plat for a, uh, it's a, it's a subdivision, but, uh, I didn't, uh, realize it would be called that when I started this process. Uh, my wife and I were looking for a place to build in, uh, Marshalltown. Uh, couldn't find a lot that we, uh, that we liked. We, uh, ended up finding one just outside the county on Odessa Drive. We, uh, purchased it from a gentleman who said, you can buy as much of this land as you want. Uh, we bought enough for two lots. I thought it'd be a good idea to buy a little extra land, so we ended up buying 3.23 acres with the intent of someday maybe subdividing it and selling off the other lot. So, uh, there's no time like the present, so I went for it and, uh, went through the process, uh, of subdivision. It's, uh, quite a lengthy process. There are a number of requirements when you're here with, within the two-mile, uh, donut around Marshalltown. And what that means is that, uh, both the county and city have jurisdiction. So, you've got to, uh, satisfy all requirements by both, uh, by both, uh, organizations. And, uh, this should be the final step. We've gotten approval through the, uh, through the city. This was back on the 22nd of August. And, uh, we had the planning and zoning meeting last week, and they approved it. And now we're off, uh, to the races here at the, uh, at the Board of Supervisors meeting.
I know I followed, I've followed this through the city, city council.
Okay.
And the hoops that you jumped through. And you have, you have jumped properly through all the hoops and done everything they asked you to do and needed to do. And so, it goes to our zoning, they vote on it, they approved it, and now it comes to us for the final, final decision. And, uh, we, we've talked with John Coontz, um, you know, separately and had a visit with him a little bit on it. And saying that, I would, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the Resolution 2013 dash 0039 that accepts the recommendation of the zoning commission and approves the preliminary and final subdivision flats for doctor, uh, for, uh, the plots for the Husak subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion? Good luck and, uh, and rule call, please.
You're done hoop jumping.
Yeah, you're done hoop jumping.
Is there any, um, plans of anything in the future for that area? You know, the gentleman that you just mentioned that, that, uh, he was willing to sell off a bunch of other stuff. Is that something that you're looking into?
Well, the situation, uh, was that you can sub, you can sell off, you can subdivide your land every 10 years. According, this is according to John. And he hadn't done that. And so, he said, yeah, I'll sell you, you know, I'll sell you, uh, a lot. And so, he's done that. But I can tell you during the process, uh, he said, you're going to take care of all the paperwork. Alls I want is a check. I don't want to go to any meetings. I don't want to be involved in any of the red tape. So, I don't know, now that he's done this, whether or not he's going to want to do it again, because this time, he would be creating a subdivision. And, uh, so he would have to go through the red tape.
Is it, is this off the end of Odessa or?
It is, it is. And Odessa is a private drive. It's a private road. It's not, it's in the county, but it's, it's maintained by the, by homeowners association.
But are you on the, did you, on the west side or south?
We purchased on the south side where the cul-de-sac is. Now that cul-de-sac is through street for another 125, uh, yards.
Your second lot's going to be pretty close to their farm shed, isn't it?
Uh, I don't think there's any farm shed out there.
Yeah, there's, there's one up on the hill.
Well, if there is, I don't think it belongs to the seller.
Okay.
Are you going to be a part of that association now?
Actually, uh, we've got our own, uh, road maintenance agreement for all of the, uh, homeowners along, along Odessa. And, uh, we have our own covenants for this subdivision, for the, the two lots. Uh, we pared that down considerably because a lot of them are county ordinances that you can't do these things anyway. Uh, so, so, but to answer your question is, it really just depends on the, on the landowner, and I don't think he's going to be too excited about selling and complicating his life. Uh, just my take. You know, and he may decide to put a house out there someday himself, and if he does, then he's probably going to want it to be fairly, you know, pristine.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So. All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else? We already had a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we get to item number 14, you mentioned earlier, going back to the opening of our bids. That should just be done on our next agenda as an agenda item. Would you be more comfortable if I went back and amended my motion stating that we will be opening those bids on our next meeting, November 1st? Or would you be comfortable with it just being on our next agenda as an action item?
It can just be on the next one, that's all.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to item number 14, uh, secondary road equipment purchase discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of a 1963 Oshkosh chassis with a 1974 Snowgo truck-mounted snowblower from Trans Iowa Equipment.
You found another one?
Oh, yeah, I see this.
Well, this is the, this would be the new one.
Well, I know what the old one was like.
We've, we've got a 1929 and a 1942.
Where do you keep coming up with this stuff? I mean, you keep finding...
The, the real reasoning behind it though, for finding some of these, is that these Oshkosh snow blowers have quite a few specialty parts in them. And there's several, we've, we've had a couple of times where something has failed and we had to actually had, had to have pieces fabricated, which gets really expensive really fast. So, if we can find a unit for a reasonable cost, and this, this thing has two solid power plants in it, there's a, there's an, on these snow blowers, there's an engine in, in the front for the truck and an engine in the rear that drives the blower operation. And you have an expensive transfer case and everything that gets that power from the back to the blower. So, it's, my, our real strategy here is that we can keep two snow blowers operational at a reasonable cost, and there's a lot of money in parts on this unit. And we don't know exactly if this will be the rolling chassis, or if the other two will stay rolling, and this will be a parts, like a sacrificial. But one way or another, they'll still be two operational.
Yeah, I could shoot. Last time you had to go to Minnesota to buy it.
It, well, it was through Trans Iowa, but it came out of Minnesota.
Okay.
Yeah. So, this is just, it's, it's more of a, just an opportunity for us to have some, some parts. And there's a possibility that we could roll three, but it's, our main goal is to keep, be able to keep two on the road and keep them reliable.
So, this is runable, usable?
Yes.
And partable?
Yes. Because the Oshkosh is really good about maintaining parts compatibility through, I mean, parts that will fit on the 1929 are still there on this 1974 Snowgo.
Do we have to go pick it up?
Yeah, it's in Des Moines.
Okay. It'll drive?
Yeah, it'll go in our trailer.
Okay.
All righty, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the purchase of an Oshkosh snow blower in the amount of $15,000 from Trans Iowa Equipment, Ankeny, Iowa. This purchase will be paid from the fiscal 2017 equipment budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Think it's going to snow?
If, if buying this makes it not snow, it's worth it.
Rule call, please.
Sorry. Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Item 15, Agreement for Medical Services. Discussion and possible action to approve new agreement for medical services between Marshall County, Iowa and Dr. Stephen Skerr, uh, DO from Conrad, Iowa. Um, I entertain a motion on this, and we can explain it.
Gentlemen, um, Dr. Skerr has been our medical physician in attendance at the sheriff's office since we opened it. Um, we developed a, a plan whereby we actually utilize monies garnered from the sale of commissary and the phone profits, um, and not tax money to, to cover his expenditure. Dr. Skerr came on board at a rather reduced rate. Um, he's been there for a number of years, about 10 years now. We haven't given him any raise. So, basically, what we're doing is we budgeted from the commissary money, again, this is not tax money, commissary profits. We budgeted actually the last couple of years to increase it. We have not. Um, it came time to do that. So, all we're doing is we're just shifting the money up from the inmate fund into that. And basically, and also just let you know, it's a, it's a substantial savings. Um, we get a reduced rate from him.
And don't we use Dr. Skerr also for our physicals and everything?
Yeah, we do that. We try to, as much as we can. You know, sometimes timing, timely, timely wise, it's, it doesn't work. But the, it, it's a very good deal. And again, it's not tax money. It's, it's inmate profits money from, uh, commissary and from phone profits.
Is he available at their?
He's, he's available. We, we also do telemedication, telepsychiatry too. So, there's times that we have two RNs on staff, so it's not uncommon for, for them to converse with him freely, and he's willing to do that. Or for our staff, our jail staff is medication deployment or dispersion certified. So, sometimes when they need to maybe get a different med or something, they might call him, and he's always available for that.
How often does he physically come down to?
Every week, uh, at least, at least once a week.
Yeah.
Minimum. Um, sometimes it's more, it depends upon if we get an influx from, uh, Immigration, uh, Customs Enforcement, you know, ICE, where we have maybe a situation dealing with, um, say, TB or, you know, indications of that. Uh, we, we like to get him involved a little bit earlier. But our, our end staff is very well qualified for that, and they converse with him virtually daily. They converse with him. So...
If we do have the TB, do you also, do we have to contact public health for that?
No, we don't.
No?
No. We meet all, uh, requirements and, and we meet all minimum requirements for that.
True.
Our staff, our staff is actually completely certified for, to handle all those issues. Isolation testing, all that stuff, so. It doesn't happen very often, but we have those with other, other comical diseases that come into.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any questions at all? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the new agreement between Marshall County, Iowa and Dr. Stephen Skerr, uh, DO Conrad, Iowa for, uh, medical services.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on to item number 16, Resolution 2016 dash 0040. This is abatement of mobile home taxes. And Jared, it's all yours. Here we go again.
Good morning, guys. Uh, just a little housekeeping on, uh, four mobile homes. Um, the first two lots, 106 and 80, um, those were, they've applied for junking certificates, and they're junked mobile homes. So, um, you know, not hard to collect on junk.
Right.
Uh, the second two, um, though there's certain protocols on how you're supposed to move a mobile home out of a mobile home park, but sometimes people don't necessarily follow them. So, these people received a statement saying, well, why am I getting taxed for this when I, my mobile home's in another county now? So, we found out these are not in the county. We've verified it with the mobile home park owner that they were moved out prior to the, the date that we sent out, um, tax statements. So, um, therefore, we're baiting those off the books. Any questions, guys?
Interesting. There's another matter of cleaning things up.
Yep, yep. And we, if we stay on top of this, it, it just helps from the books being compiled, or compiled of, of problems that in the end we are, are just not going to be collectible. And it's, as long as we work with our mobile home parts diligently, we can stay on top of things. I mean, hey, it's mobile homes. Um, they move in and out. It's, it's, uh, they're, they're a headache. They're a headache. There's no doubt about it. So, if we don't stay on top of little issues like this here and there, um, you know, we can save ourselves some bigger headaches.
Yeah, exactly.
But it's just nature of the beast.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2016 dash 0040, abatement of mobile home taxes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number 17, public forum. This is time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken to any of these topics brought up in the public forum. And here comes the public forum.
It's just something I wanted to update you on. It's not on the agenda. Um, we had Cole Needham here from Melbourne that was going to do the filming, and he did some of the filming, but was cut off by fog at like 11 o'clock at night. And he was hoping to finish this Friday between 7:00 and 10:30. So, it would just be another short-term closure. He does have our signs still, and his insurance is valid for the entire timeframe. Just wanted to give you guys an update that...
Okay.
He'll be in contact with the comm center when he closes and when he opens, and so there won't be any...
So, he's filming this at night?
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a...
I think that was during, during the day.
A night shot that he was trying to get, I guess. And he got most of it, but then the fog kind of rolled in, and so it made it tough for lights and camera.
Sure, sure.
You know, that cameo on the bread truck in the fog at night would have looked really cool.
Coming up over the old, the old hill.
I think you missed an opportunity there.
Thanks for that update. Anything else? Hearing none, seeing none. Uh, next item is a regular, next regular session is scheduled for October 18th, 2016 at 9:00 AM. All business to back upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor, recorder, and recorders' office or the Board of Supervisors' office by Thursday, October 13th, 2016 at 1:00 PM. There may no further business to come in front of the board. We stand adjourned at